So I'm going to be. I'm going to be chairing this evening because Commissioner Lee is absent. All right, so, uh, welcome to the Tuesday, August eighth, twenty twenty-three working session uh of the Planning Commission. Sorry, I have a lot of windows that I need to. Make sure I can see all of them. Okay, um, so the first thing on our agenda is public comment and there will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. Um, so to address us, you can use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine if you're on the phone to indicate a desire to speak. You'll be identified by name or the last three digits of your phone number. And your comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Mister Leonard, does any, is anybody indicating a desire to speak?
No, they are not.
Me, I guess there's no lag. I'm sorry, I used to lag. There's no lag because this is just zoom. Okay.
Yep. No, no, no hands raised.
Nothing. Okay, great. I'll stop stalling and we'll proceed to item number three. Uh, so this is a discussion of the downtown zoning premium evaluation and a presentation of the draft ordinance for discussion. Mister Leonard, do you have a presentation?
I do not. However, Megan Masson Minock from Carla Wortman uh will be joining us here in a hot second.
Great.
And will be running us through. The presentation. So, um, while Megan is getting all digitally connected and the like. As a reminder, this is uh work that we have been working, staff has been working with the planning commission's direction, of course. Uh, in regard to an evaluation of the downtown premiums, we've completed a series of stakeholder interviews. Um, um, that were based in foundations by some visions, goals and assumptions that you helped us craft. Uh, we have ported back to the planning commission on the conclusion and sort of some of the themes that came out of that. Um, at that same meeting, we had a preliminary discussion with the um commission about where does that lead us with proposed changes? And so this is uh an opportunity now through this work session for you to provide any feedback to both uh Megan and myself. So that we can um make adjustments or craft the most uh, I guess responsive uh product to next schedule ideally for a public hearing and formal consideration at the planning commission. Um, so we've included a couple of uh attachments in your packet. Those include sort of a summary memorandum, uh, a late ad that uh replicates the character district overlay information from our UDC ordinance and uh in in the map of where those are located, uh some uh peer community comparisons. And some preliminary draft ordinance language um that we think is responsive to some of the previous planning commission discussions. So with that, Megan, take it away.
Thanks so much. It's lovely to be here again. I'm going to share my screen. Oh. Okay, um, so.
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt real quick and just request Brett if you.
Oh, yeah.
Me from uh discussion panel.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner survey is recusing uh from any uh downtown previous discussion. So I am going to honor that and remove her from the meeting.
All right, well, happy to be here again. Um, we wanted to start tonight with um the agenda and starting off with reviewing the assumptions and goals um that you had discussed and came to earlier in this process. Discuss a little bit about our amendment vote approach. And then based on the input that was given at the past work session. And then explain the proposed UDC amendments and have discussion on them. So the assumptions um that had been come uh that the planning commission had arrived at after looking at research. Um, and the situation of permits and how things had played out uh since, since the early two thousands. Um, in looking at the situation with premiums in the downtown. Were that an equilibrium of development types and land uses in the downtown is important and residential office and commercial core are core uses to be continually balanced in the downtown. Developing in the downtown is more difficult and more expensive than elsewhere in the city. Uh, that since the last amendments to the premiums in two thousand nineteen, the affordable housing millage provides a dedicated funding source for necessary affordable housing. But the mi- millage funds may not be sufficient to be the sole source of affordable housing funding. Also that a significant number of properties in downtown are ineligible for premiums. That the current downtown residential market is either high-end or low-scale residential buildings for student housing. And that current market doesn't support the building of attainable high-density housing downtown. Also attainable density in the downtown only provides places for present and future in our brains to live, but also influences the regional stability by providing access to housing in a walkable mixed-use place. And that current premiums are not being utilized due to a variety of reasons. And then based on those assumptions, planning commission arrived at these three goals. Increase affordability of housing downtown. Increase sustainability, including energy efficiency in the downtown. And increase equity in the downtown. So at the last planning commission meeting, what we heard was that maybe this is time to not have premiums, increase FAR or increase the way that increase opportunities to build. Um, and then that would achieve those goals. So in discussions with your staff. We decided the approach to take at this time was to get not have premiums. Not regulate by FAR in the downtown and only regulate by height. And there were a number of reasons that we did that. Um, first of all, for simplicity. Over and over and over when we had stakeholder interviews, we were told that it's complicated, it's hard to understand, it's hard to interpret. I'm not sure if I got the premium then at the end do I had something that changed along the way that I wouldn't have the premium, what would happen? And it was affecting developers and financiers and also um and and also nonprofit developers. Um, so, and then in talking with staff, um. Came to realize that there are height exceptions for sustainable and affordable housing developments across all zoning districts in terms of a height bonus that's available for that. Then also looking at the transit corridor, the TC one, that set a president precedent of not using FAR. Um, and while not using FAR, FAR can make it so that you have a constrained building envelope. That's not just the height that may force um some different articulations of a building. Um, and felt that with the downtown um, character areas and the regulations associated with those, those may be able to take care of having those quality buildings. Um, and that the FAR may not necessarily be necessary. However, in the comprehensive plan that you're starting upon would be an excellent place also to dig deeper into that. And then to lay the groundwork for any future development regulations in the downtown, whether they're design regulations, um, etc. So any questions on the reasoning behind that? So if we just regulate by height, the amendments to the UDC are very simple. Um, it's just removing the FAR from D one and D two and table five point seven dash four. Um, and then deleting the text in section five point one eight point six premiums. And having that as quote unquote reserved as a placeholder instead. So what we wanted to discuss with you tonight was, does the proposed UDC amendments implement the goals as defined by the planning commission for this process? And what changes are needed before public hearing on these proposed amendments? Um, and it's fine to tell us that we got it wrong and we need to go back to the drawing board. Um, but it would be lovely to have some direction about where you felt like that should go. So I'm going to stop my share so that we are all looking.
And if I could, so if I could jump in. Just to echo a couple of points in some of our thought process is that one of the things we heard, I think both from the planning commission at our initial um reporting about and trying to solicit direction on which way to go with simplicity. Um, trying to make it clear, um, we, that was a theme and a lot of the stakeholder feedback that we heard is focus on the things that matter to us and do it in a simple way. We talked a lot about, um. I I think we had a lot of conversation in that same meeting about what's important to us in the downtown. And a big part of that is frankly, development. It is a good place for high-density development of all sorts. It is proximate to other land uses. It is proximate to transportation choices and part of that, so the convergence of those things is frankly, trying to make it easier to develop downtown, which we think is a good thing. And one, one way to simplify that is to sort of go more in on either FAR regulation or height regulation as a means of trying to simplify what is now a pretty complex um framework of leading to development typology. And frankly, my instinct and when we were discussing with other staff and the consultant team is height is probably more resonant to a lot of people in our community than FAR is. Um, FAR is not even always resonant to designers and developers. Um, height is, it is something that people can relate to. Um, we have experience and to that end, oh, we took the liberty of one of those attachments of sharing with the commission uh some examples of building heights of different products in our community as they relate to many of our character districts. Um, I want to be clear as part of this, we're not proposing any changes to the current heights of our character districts. Those range, uh, I believe from one twenty, one fifty to one eighty in the D one and around sixty feet in most of the D two's I think districts. So there's no proposed scale change there. However, as Megan noted, by by this approach, it's sort of taking a uh, it's not a premium, but taking another mechanism that the city has previously incorporated into our ordinance to incentivize things that we really care about affordability and sustainability. And so by removing premiums from the downtown, um, we are only relying upon those same mechanisms that apply broadly across the city. And to recap, those are thirty percent height bonus. If you are either an affordable project, or we call it has an affordability component or a sustainability component. In the case of affordability, that means fifteen percent of the units are affordable. Or a com- or a uh cash and loo or a fee and loo contribution is made um in in lieu of that. And in the case of sustainability, um, we define that as a building that has a minimum of sixty percent of its rooftop dedicated to solar collectors. And if the building is not electrified at the time of construction, it has to be constructed in such a manner that it has the capacity in order to enable that conversion at some future day. I, in this scenario, I just want to be honest, like if there's one piece of it that feels like a little bit um unresolved to me is that probably that sustainability component definition. But I think this puts us in a framework where we could come back to that question to figure out what is that right trigger going forward? Um, to not only apply to downtown buildings potentially, but all buildings across the city. So, um, that's just a little bit more context on top of what Megan provided. And again, we're really looking for I I'm looking for your direction. Is this on the right track? You have concerns about it? What questions or other information can we bring before you feel it's ready for a consideration?
Hey, thank you. Is there anybody who wants to kick us off, Commissioner Mills?
Thanks. Um, I like this. I, I think that like it's, I like the simplicity of it. This is, this is a step towards unzoning. Um, uh, even though that wasn't the intention of this, but I, I went back and compared kind of what our goals are. And thank you for starting your presentation again with like, I, I think I really appreciate that process of uh that we went through in this, that you took us through in this. Um, and thinking of what our goals are, and I think that this moves towards that. Similar to where Brett is, I don't know. Um, I had to go back and reminder myself that we already had that exception in that that thirty percent height exception. Uh, that seems like an elegant solution and to make that available across the city makes a lot of sense. We've for a long time heard about the conflict between FAR and height. Um, I mean, this goes back to forever, right? To their premium discussions or the D, D one, D two discussions for a long time. And so, um, that seems to be removing one of the barriers, the confusing, complicated thing, you know, barriers, but ultimately, at the end of the day, this is not changing how tall buildings can be like, um, it's just making it much more straightforward. And so I like that a lot. Um. I like that a lot. I, I think I don't know that it would lead to dramatic shifts, to be real honest. Um, but I also really appreciate the comparison of height limits in other places. Um. And so I, uh, I think that sticking with what we have for uh, on on the character overlay um table for the different districts makes a lot of sense. It's in keeping with kind of what we have there now. Um, even if because of our layer of FAR, people can't always achieve that. I mean, I just think I, I really appreciate the elegant simple solution, even though my compliment of that was not elegant or simple, but um, good work.
Good work, Megan. We don't always hear of zoning as elegant.
It can be, it can be.
Anybody else want to comment? Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I want to echo Commissioner Mills praise of the process that you led us through, Megan. Um, and the question you asked, like, like, I, like, our original goals, I don't think that this, I don't necessarily think this directly you know, impacts our goals. And we've gotten criticism, you know, from TC one of like, why aren't you, why aren't you like requiring sustainability or affordability? But I think by simplifying this, we're encouraging hopefully more development and that development will bring us property taxes at a higher rate that will fund sustainability and affordability. So I think just being able to be a lot more clear and taking guesswork out of things to me would just open this up to, you know, developers wanting to come here instead of complaining about development in Ann Arbor.
Mister Leonard.
Uh, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt mentioned something that I wanted to, I, I I just want to be honest, I'm having, I don't know that I'm explaining this very well, but I'm going to try. So I think one of the assumptions that we talked about was here, we, we sit now in a different place, particularly as it relates to having an affordable housing millage. And in fact, we also have a sustainability. And I, I just want to name, I think one of the, one of the balances of this approach is that I think that holds true in both of those categories to an extent. We now are investing in sustainability and affordability broadly. And as the city grows, that investment grows. And so I think that that is unequivocally true. I think that there is a distinction, however, though, even absent that. When you, I think you were also alluding to this. Development, particularly of housing. If it's not directly dedicated restricted affordable units. It still meets that goal of helping our affordability issue from strictly a supply and demand perspective. I don't think it solves it, but it helps it. It probably at least hopes hopefully slows affordability that us and a lot of other communities are experiencing. I want to name though that I don't know that the same equivalent holds true for sustainability. The millages, I think, are roughly equivalent. Any housing that is built, I think, helps with our affordability goals. I do think that there is a bit of a gap there for sustainability and energy efficiency and the like. But I'm, I, I want to be honest, I'm comfortable with that. This board has talked about that from the perspective of that. The best place for a lot of that is actually in the regulatory environment. So it is equally and broadly being applied to a lot of different projects. So just the way your comments spark that, you know, I just wanted to name that because I think that is a bit of a unique ancillary benefit of any housing development versus how that measures with our standard or uh equates with our sustainability.
Commissioner Mills.
Just in response to that, I, I would agree with what you said. But add on that attached units, especially those that are not just attached by their sides, but are attached at the top. Are more energy efficient. So because you just have less exposure to, you know, uh, opportunities for um heat transfer. So yes, and um, I mean, it, we still wanted to go farther and I totally agree that like this is not necess- like building code is the place for that. Um, but also encouraging attached units is going to move us towards. I mean, this is among the reasons why we have, our units are smaller. Those tend to be, you know, have less energy intensity per inhabitant and that when they're attached, they are significantly less energy hogs.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
I also wanted to yes and because that sparked something in my head that I keep throwing out that I still would like to explore at some point, but other mechanisms for more broadly incentivizing sustainability. Um, taking them away from the downtown premiums makes sense to me. It wasn't working, but like, are there things we can do with the process with time, et cetera, to help incentivize that? Because you're right, Brett, like if everybody just goes in now to downtown and develops like these gas-powered buildings, that's not really meeting our goals, even if they are paying taxes into the climate village, but there, I think there are still other things we can do that hopefully would work better than these, these premiums have.
Um, I maybe just wanted to, like, for clarity of our own understanding and also anybody who's listening or paying attention to this conversation. Uh, just wanted to talk through for a minute the, the consequences of, of removing the FAR restriction and just confirm slash clarify that the limiting factor for how many units a building could have downtown. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is historically there had been an FAR limit and a height. And I think the FAR limit is the thing which is um, which has been limiting the scale of development downtown. So by removing that, we will get denser buildings, but the height limits aren't increasing. I just, so is, yeah, Brett's saying, yes, that is true. I guess what I want to know is like because Sarah Mills, you referred to this, like, you don't think there's going to be a kind of radical change in what the kinds of things we see being built downtown. I guess I'm curious, like, has anybody actually modeled a couple scenarios, test scenarios or run the numbers and calculated that by removing FAR but keeping height where it is. A typical project could have X number more units or X number more floors. Um, because I think if that, if it's not a significant increase in the density, then we should know that and flag that.
Yeah, uh, uh, let me take, uh, let me try to respond to that, Megan. If I miss, if you want to add anything, let me know. We did talk about this a little bit and um, we gave you a height table, but we didn't give you an FAR table. And so one of the things we could do is we could try to pull some examples of some of the FARs that correspond to some of those heights. But I will say that a piece of me thought it, why does it matter? That is, I think that there was, if there was a convergence where the full height of a project couldn't be attained under the under the ordinance because the FAR was a limiting factor. Then this change is going to actually, it would allow that building to potentially then meet that height. Or it, if a building was able to meet that height, the potential change by limiting FAR is if that we're building were to be redeveloped. It would be more, it would have more FAR within that same height limit. And so maybe it would be wider, further up. It would have less narrow towers. When we talked about it, we ultimately determined, we, we were of the opinion discussing this approach that they're still going to be building design limitations where it's not like you're just going to always take a square parcel. And it's, it's just going to be massively queued up because you're going to have window access. You're going to have logic about how you're laying out units with hallways and loading those units. And so um, we could provide some more information on that. We could try to give you some examples of um, where the FAR uh stopped a project from reaching the height that's currently in the ordinance, but and like I said, in one perspective, if our desire is more attached units in a good place with transportation choices. We're definitely not going to make that more difficult. If anything, this is going to open up the opportunity for that to happen. Megan, anything in that conversation that I missed, do you think?
Yeah, I, I would just say that um, to build on what you said, you're opening, opening the parameters of the box in which buildings are built. And so when you have the simplicity of the height, which the majority of the cities that we looked at regulate by height. And a number of them regulated by height by character area, um, just in the way that Ann Arbor did. Um, and there were very few that did both height and FAR. Some might choose to do FAR only. Um, my experience in working and planning consulting in twenty years over a lot of different communities is developers want to fill that box as much as they can. Um, and so when you're taking away the constraint of the FAR, you're going to get more units to fill in. But you have strong design parameters with diagonals, fenestration, um, what it looks like at the street level that are going to protect the quality of the building that you're looking for. Um, so those just wanted to add on that I think as soon as you do this, you will have developers come in who are looking for taller buildings than they felt like they would be able to achieve earlier because they were looking at formulas and it couldn't quite reach. And also if we, if you directed us to go back and say, no, we don't like it just by height, we want height and FAR. But we need to increase it. What we have to look at is um, where that FAR was budding up to the height. Um, because there invariably would be conflicts and in your last session, that's what I was alluding to um in to Commissioner, why she, that, that's that there could be a conflict and we need to look at that and ma- and resolve them.
Yeah, Commissioner Dish, I see your hand up. Let me just, maybe I can respond to that quickly. But first, I um, all of that makes complete sense to me. I like regulating my height. I don't desire to continue to use FAR. I think what I want to ensure is that um that lifting that the FAR will allow us to get significantly more units. I mean, I think that's really the goal. And so just observationally, when I look around, I don't see, you know, skinny towers that are not maximizing the buildable footprint, but stretching up because they have height limit, but they ran out of FAR. I think the buildings downtown tend to be pretty blocky. They tend to be extrusions, you know, once you get beyond the street wall and the step back and the blah, blah, blah. So I just, yeah, I think it would be helpful to take a minute and just think about, you know, so if nine hundred percent was the limit before and X is a nine hundred was the FAR limit before and one eighty or blah, blah, blah is the height limit now, if we remove the FAR, like, does that actually get us more stories or, you know, density than we thought we could achieve? And if it's minimal, then I would propose that we consider increasing the height limit. Um, or, you know, if not, if that can't be hap- happen at this stage, that that gets placed in a near future, something. placed in a near future, something or other to take up. Um. Okay, Commissioner Dish.
I don't actually want to interrupt this flow of discussion if you want to keep on going about that.
Well, does that, yeah, does anybody have a comment maybe relative to that? Because you're going to shift to a different
I'm going to shift and I'm wondering if we shouldn't maybe look at the height table that we got uh, to i- if that would help with your question, but I'm going to um, defer right now to Mr. Leonard.
Okay, well, we'll come back. Yeah, let's come back if that's a different topic and maybe, so I saw Commissioner White your hand and also, yeah, Mr. Leonard. I'm not sure which one up first.
Which are white.
Thanks. Uh, I'll echo the other commissioners. Thank you, Megan, for hearing us and coming back with our bar Commissioner Mills's uh, phrase, an elegant solution, uh, which um, uh, gets us, I think, to what we want. And I just wanted to echo uh, what I believe I hear Commissioner Abrams or Chair Abrams uh, question around um, the intersection between the FAR and the height and whether or not that will allow us to achieve um, more units in the downtown. So right now, my understanding is we have a, a D1 height limit of 180. You can get a 30% bump, which would take you to two, what, two thirty something? Um, like two thirty-two, and I think Tower Plaza is two forty-six, but that's just with the height inside the footprint of this, of the site. And so just wanting to make sure that the goal of being able to unlock more units with developers is going to be achieved and that we don't actually have a new premium just by another name, which I think was some of my concern at our last conversation. So I'll, I'll start there and then I'll clarify based on what answer I get. If any.
So what I'm hearing, I think you'd like to see first of all, some more data in that table as it relates to FAR. I think um, I, I don't know that I understood uh, uh, Megan, your, I think you were trying to get to this at the last meeting, I think. Commissioner Abrams, you really crystallized it for me. Your point is even by unlocking the box here in this method, we are not stretching the box. And if we, if, if just removing one is not going to result in much difference, then why are we doing it? Or should we look at other options? As a reminder, right now, the box has actually been shrunken with the 2019 premium adjustments. So even, even this approach going back with, within the, the existing height districts, we are actually going we are opening up and easing the ability to build more densely than what we have experienced since 2019. Economics, market conditions, you know, all factor into that. But so I want to be clear that this is sort of recapturing the volume of our existing box in a way that we had sort of half filled before with balloons that had to be popped, like in my stories here. Um. That said, um, I'd be interested in feedback from the planning commission. I think re- reopening that box is, is one thing. Starting to think about increasing the size of that box in these character districts, I think is a bigger conversation. And so I'm not saying that it's one that shouldn't be undertaken, but if we are going to undertake that, I do think that that would be well suited as part of our comprehensive plan process. Um, so I just put that out there that I think that this approach is sort of recapturing some potential that we've lost from our 2019 amendments. If, if the planning commission desires uh, to reconsider those height limits uh, for those character areas now as part of this, I think that's a broader exercise than I can deliver in the next couple of months to a public here.
Um, Megan, did you have something you wanted to say in response? And then I think Commissioner White also wanted to respond.
Um, so my gut tells me if you take the FAR away and you only regulate by height, you're going to have more units. Um, and we can do some data to look at that, but that's what my gut tells me. And then looking at that, the sheet, and I can share my screen if that's okay, with the building heights. So you can see that, um, you know, Tower Plaza was built a long time ago and that's at two sixty-five University Tower. And then you're starting to get into some more like the varsity and Sierra Gone Place that um, were developed under premiums. Um, and what we'd have to do is look back at their character districts and see how many of them are nudging up or where, where were the gaps that they weren't constrained by the FAR, the premiums. But also I think with the simplicity of this, that you will have a lot more developers feeling like it's possible to approach this because they see an easier um, and shorter development review process.
Thank you, Commissioner White.
Yeah, I think, I think my question or clarification was going, or maybe my question to staff was going to be in your sort of memory, your working memory, has a developer since 2019 maxed out their FAR? And so like as they were under the height, you know, restriction in the D1 already, did they max out their FAR? And if that FAR wasn't there, we would have seen 10%, 15%, 20% more units in that development. Like, does that question?
Yeah, I don't, I, it does. I will, we will work on, I, I don't envision doing that for that entire table. But let me bring some case studies in that example. Yes, there are some developments that ended up at six hundred and ninety-two percent FAR in the context of a seven hundred percent. That has definitely happened. Um, so let us bring some of those examples. Um.
Well, it sounds like, and, and I would be interested in with the table before we go to Commissioner Dish. Um, the questions around the height, it's like, I don't want to it, it sounded like you said that this would take multiple months for you to do this work and bring it back. So
Changing heights, I think, is a broader discussion. Bringing you this data on some FAR projects is not. I don't think that's
Okay.
Like, I'm sorry, I want to clarify, if you were talking about, I think we should go from a hundred and eighty feet to two hundred and fifty feet as the base height in our, in these character areas. I think that's the longer process that I was trying to.
And so would that be in your, I, I guess, professional opinion as well as your experiential uh, um, opinion? Is that something for us to take up in the comp plan? Um, because it needs that kind of community input? Or is it something that you feel like it can go on our work plan? Um, and be running parallel to the comp plan? So if you could just give some guidance for like where you think it should be?
I'd like to see it. I think it's a totally appropriate in the comp plan. Um, I think part of you know, we're seeing some project examples of pressures on our downtown. We're starting to see some very downtown-like projects that have come to you as PUDs or either in concept or fully, fully developed proposals. And that tells me that there is a pressure that we need to release in some way in our downtown market. Is that increasing the heights from one eighty to something else? Is it growing the footprint of that district? And I think that's absolutely an appropriate conversation for the council plan.
And so then the remedy for the developer today is to um, go around the existing so, zoning, um, using a PUD where there are no height limits. But there is a, if the density exceeds the underlying density, then they would have effectively an additional tax because they'll have to pay into the affordable housing. So then we will only see developers who are just baking that into their development as a cost uh, to do this. And so they're willing to pay that because they have capital that will allow them to pay that extra tax so that they can get the development that they want. And then
Their pro forma supports it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, yeah. So as long as it's not something that would delay the public hearing significantly. I, I, I'll speak for myself and, and let others speak for themselves. I would be interested to just see what a handful of the last developments looked like in terms of how they came up to and approached their FAR and how um, this new um, a code structure would have permitted um, more units. Because I, I think I agree with Commissioner Abrams that my goal uh, in this conversation has been how do we put more housing units in the downtown? And then we heard from the DDA that with the loss of those eight thousand employees that the businesses within the downtown are suffering because they don't have the necessary density because they've lost all of those workers because of COVID. So how do we ensure that our downtown remains vibrant? And the one tool that we have is by enabling more residential density within that dish.
Great, thank you, Commissioner White. Okay, Commissioner Dish, do you want to?
Yeah, so before I actually moved to where I was going to go, I just want to make sure that I'm not oversimplifying. So when I look at the height table that we have, um, a hundred and eighty feet, yeah, essentially by removing the FAR, FAR, excuse me, restrictions. We're making it easier for anybody who comes in with a proposal for D1 to either hit a hundred and fifty feet, depending on the character district or a hundred and eighty feet. Because there's no way in which FAR restrictions are prohibiting that. And then when I look at the height table, um, the tallest building, if you get rid of the two out, well, the one outlier, which is Tower Plaza. Um, and the second, which isn't so much an outlier, it's two oh five, but the, the tallest building under those two top is one seventy-four. So we'd be getting buildings that are taller than most of the buildings that we have in D1. And then if you wanted to go higher, you can get up to two thirty-four, which makes you the second tallest building in our downtown. And you get there instead of with a requirement that you have to have fifty percent of your um, affordability in units, you can do a hundred percent payment in lieu, which we got some feedback saying that that was a more manageable cost that underwriters were more willing to give. So um, so it seems to me that the, that, I mean, I'm not feeling as nervous that we're not really making a big change in D1. D2 is where I have more nervousness because the height limit is so much lower. And um, and it just seems to me that where we've been getting some proposals are for projects that aren't in D1. And they want D1 permissions, but they're not in D1 and that's where we're getting PUDs. And so, I mean, that's just a, so am I oversimpler or am I getting it right? That, that, that the D1 height limits are, are pretty ample looking at the things that were, we've actually gotten downtown.
Um, I, yes, I think that's all accurate. I'm, I guess I'm a little um, your concern about the D2 and the height being shorter there. So we're not proposing any change to the D2 height.
Right.
So um, that thirty percent premium already applies to the D2 height. So um, your concern is that the premiums are not being used to sort of dissuade full realization of that height in the D2?
No, sorry, I don't think I was clear. Um, I'm, I, I am hearing from other commissioners that they're thinking we might need to raise, raise the base heights. And I'm hearing that that might be a more appropriate discussion for the comp plan.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking that I'm not so worried about it. I don't feel such an urgency about the D1 height needing to raise that. I feel more of a sense of urgency around D2. Um, if our goal is to unlock density sooner and avoid um, not having to have to pull our hair out over so many PUDs that we're getting. So I don't, I'm not trying to advocate that we jump the comp plan process. I was just trying to make an observation that I felt a greater sense of urgency about, or a greater sense of anxiety about the height, regulating only by height, not yielding us much. I feel more anxiety about that around D2 than I do around D1, if that's making any sense. But the thing that I wanted to say was that in looking at the comparative thing, uh, the um, comparison research, what fascinated me is that our heights are high compared to a lot of the comparisons here. They are in keeping with the other cities in Michigan. Um, where, uh, you know, Grand Rapids has no height limit in D1, seven to 10 stories in D2. That's exactly where we are. Um, East Lansing is taller than us, but when we look around the country, we are more generous than most places that are near our population. So I think that that is interesting. Um, so Gainesville is willing to let things go crazier than we are. I shouldn't use the word crazy, just denser and more fantastic. And I noticed, I just wanted to flag because of something that Commissioner Hammer Schmidt said about could, are there other things we can do to help provide an incentive for sustainability? Uh, yeah, sustainability. I noticed that Gainesville, Gainesville's green program incentives are expedited approval process, reduced or waived, waived fees, reduced development plan review fee for projects. Uh, blah, 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 sorry, going on there. Solar, water heater, can, cash incentive. Anyway, they are doing expedited approval process, which is something that um, i- it, it stands out because I don't see any other place that's doing that. And I had heard that that would be something that we should really be cautious about doing because it might create a sense of discrimination against other projects, but um, I just wanted to flag that.
Thanks, Commissioner Dish. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, Brett.
So um, just uh, paying close attention to the discussion while multitasking. Um, this is just one example that I wanted to, to share. So um, the South University Character District, it has a maximum height in the D1 of a hundred and fifty feet. And I pulled up um, the details on the uh, it was approved as the Collegiate North, that I think it was ultimately marketed as Vic Village North, which is the uh, housing development right on the diag. There's, I think, a Joe's Pizza, it was the former Oryx bookstore site. That, so that project had a maximum height of a hundred and fifty feet. It, that building has, uh, the site plan has it at a hundred and forty-nine feet, nine inches tall. It had a maximum of seven hundred It had a maximum of seven hundred percent FAR without the super premium at the time. This was prior to the 2019 amendments. And that, they built it at six hundred and ninety-nine percent FAR. And so that building achieved seven hundred percent FAR at a hundred and fifty. So if that had been in a hundred and eighty-foot limit, that seven, there would have been space, thirty more feet of additional FAR to realize on that project. So in the case of, I think to Commissioner White's question and Commissioner Abrams' question, in the case of this project, it might not have resulted in a lot more units within that height. But that also tells me that you, you can get a seven hundred percent FAR in a hundred and fifty feet. So that is going to go above that in those character districts where you have a hundred and eighty feet height limit. And then if that thirty percent bonus shows us, that's more. So, so we'll still do some, I'm still gonna do some research so I can arm you with some of, some of those case studies. But I think the short answer is in some cases, this is going to probably open up some. In some cases, it might not open up as much.
Any other thoughts? Yeah, Commissioner Mills.
Now I'm regretting saying that it's not dramatic, because I think that by the look of things, it's not dramatic. I think the fact that in order to achieve that seven hundred percent, this was like, they still could only get to there from premiums. And so let's remember, back then, the base was four hundred percent. So they had to do something special at that rate. And I think across the street, right, like, maybe there's one of them that's affordable, that had to use the affordable housing for students, right? So we are effectively saying visibly, like, you don't have to jump through those supers. If you do, if you give us sustainability, if you, if you contribute to the Affordable Housing Fund, you can go even taller. And so, but what I, what I, what I meant by not being dramatic is that I ran the number, right? Like the two thirty-four, like, I don't think to the not close follower of planning commission meetings, right? That this is suddenly, we're going to have buildings that are totally different than what we see. We're just making a whole lot easier to get them. And, and so that's what I, that's what I meant to say by that. And so, yeah. I do have one question, though. Commissioner White's question about PUDs as a mechanism for like, what do you wanna do? Now, I can't imagine a situation in which somebody would want to do a PUD in a D1 district. But maybe now that we have just been talking about height, D2, how, how do you calculate the affordable housing contribution when there is no density? There is no, does that make sense? Like, if there's no R, how do, how, how do you think about that?
No, and it's a good question. It applies to the D1 in the event that it happened, because we do calculate on either FAR or height. I don't know that answer. I mean, remember that D1 and D2 was a reaction against PUDs downtown. It was, PUDs had to be used prior to D1 and D2 in order to get the building typologies that the D1, D2 was trying to cultivate. And so, yeah, I think you're right. I think it's unlikely that you would see that. But on the same token, I don't know why you would in the D2 either, because you are similarly opening that up to make it easier to attain four hundred percent FAR. There were before the two, only two hundred percent was by right.
Yeah.
You have that height potential. I think if there is a, if there is a challenge there, it is because of its proximity, right? For what I was saying, there is the, the development desire will want to continue to burst at the D1 seams, and it will want to start occupying that density in the D2. Ultimately, that's up to the decision of the Planning Commission, City Council, whether or not those seem appropriate or not. But I, the short answer is, I don't know off the top of my head. That's something that I'll, will work on and, and figure out how that PUD language would need to be considered and/or potentially modified in that case. Similarly, keep in mind, that was added within the last, well, since I've been here. Originally, that was strictly a density calculation. And so that evolved over the last seven years to reflect both dense, density-based districts and formed-based districts. So it's a good question. I don't know the answer, but we lived without that applying to a fair, to form-based districts in the past before. That could be an option.
I, I also want to underscore what Commissioner Dish said. I think, this is my recollection, is that it's really hard, the combination of FAR and height limits, I think it's really hard to max out your FAR even with premiums in D2, because it's not just, you know, sixty feet and four hundred percent, but we also have the, you have to have some open space. And you have to have, you know, you have a limitation on lot coverage. And so I think the combination of that means you can never build lot line to lot line. And I feel like that is because that is also where we're seeing the development pressure. I think that that, thanks for bringing that up, Commissioner Dish, and that's definitely something that should be part of the comp plan. And I can't, yeah. My sense is like, in the three hundreds, probably is about as high as we've gotten on, on D2 properties, even with FAR because of the height limitation. And something tells me that one of the ones on, in the Main Street area, there's something where I think it went a little bit higher. The one on the corner, maybe? By Washington Dairy. Anyway, I can't remember, but this is, this, that comes, I feel like that's come up more.
Yeah, just another, just jumping to an example, two twelve Miller was a recently adopted D2 site plan. This is sort of just down the hill a little bit from three oh nine North Ashley, which is a recently completed condominium development on Ashley and Miller. I think I have that right.
Wrapping around the dispensary?
Exactly, exactly. And so that was, that's a D2. And that building achieved a hundred and ninety-three percent FAR, two hundred percent max FAR at that location. And its height was fifty-six of sixty feet.
So it didn't even need premium, that it didn't get any premiums and almost maxed out height?
Open space, put a big parking on the base that elevated the building. So lots of factors. But yeah, I think, yeah, we'll bring some of those examples. I think that this is, it's, yeah, I think there's gonna be some examples where it is dramatic. It is opening up. It's easier to get to some of these. But yeah, like in this case, that FAR limitation was, was not a, I don't know. I mean, they got close, a hundred and ninety-three percent of two hundred. So that's close. I don't know if there were design considerations made that if they'd done something different, it would have exceeded that and they chose not to. So. Yeah, we'll bring some of those examples. And we'll try to bring some, a balance of some, some ones where it's gonna show a change and some like this where it mentioned not so much change. Generally, I am hearing, though, that we are on the right track. That Megan has done elegant work.
Yeah, I have not heard any suggestions for revision to the proposed amendment change. Nobody's disputing that.
All right.
Just suggest the call for a little more supporting data or
Yep.
Examples. I also just, this is not that significant, but I can imagine scenarios where we will see PUDs. For increased height in exchange for some kind of public benefit. So I, you know, I just, I think just, just because we're removing this doesn't mean we've kind of satisfied some max scenario. So, but it wasn't in our list of goals to remove PUDs from possibly, right? Remove the possibility of a PUD. So I think that that's okay. Any other comments? Mr. Leonard, you seem satisfied with having the information you need from us?
Yeah, I, I am hearing, we, we're gonna bring some more data about the intersection of FAR and height. Some project examples. I will look to answer that question about the PUD language as it relates to FAR. As I think about it more, we still have other districts that are regulated by FAR. So it might actually be maybe it's a, and a third measure to that, or maybe it's not. So I will bring some brainstorming to that, but I feel close enough where my intention is to now move forward with scheduling this for a public hearing. So I don't exactly know what meeting date that is, but I really am grateful for your helping to bolster my confidence to do so.
Great.
Megan, do you have any questions?
No, just thank you for the opportunity to be part of the process.
Thank you. We appreciate.
You're not done yet.
Yeah. Getting closer. Well, we will let you go, so you don't have to hang around for the rest of the meeting. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so moving, item four on our agenda is communications received. I didn't see any in the packet the last time I checked, but I will check again. Item five is our second and final opportunity for public comment. So again, anyone listening can speak for up to three minutes about any topic. And for Zoom participants, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine to raise your hand, and we will call on you. And you have three minutes to speak, and we ask that you please state your name and address for the record.
We do have a hand raised. Just give me one moment while I get organized here.
Sure.
John Mijewski, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Thank you. John Mijewski, Mijewski Architects, four hundred North Michigan Avenue, Chicago. Thank you. I really appreciate the discussion, and I think it was super helpful. And generally speaking, I am excited and agree with most of the things that you guys went through. I can tell you from my experience that in D1, D2, we probably won't get much larger of a building, because most of the time when we run into D2, we also run into special character requirements, and those tend to cap our height. So we'll probably just be capped at, you know, let's take the standard on Packard, Williams and Maine. That was four hundred percent FAR. And we met that to the last, you know, square foot. And I don't think we really could fit much more on that site if that gives you some example. If you take the hub next to the old campus inn hotel on Huron, that was capped by height. But one more thing I would just ask is that was capped by a special requirement that the building could not be larger than a radius. You had to draw a radius around your floor plan, and that radius is what limited the FAR. The height did too, because we went to the max, but the, the other did as well. So I do think here the outcome will be positive. I just am not quite sure how this all fits into those transition areas. And I think you guys talked about that quite a bit. But I think for the cleaner districts that are just D1, you're probably gonna see what you want. Maybe you get a little bit more if they are. The only one thing I really, really ask a favor is if you're gonna make height the ultimate limitation, we are super restricted right now by the interpretation of height, that it's a glass ceiling, and that I can't have my elevator overrun go past the glass ceiling. That means I lose a story of height on every building we do in Ann Arbor. It's also detrimental now because I need stairs, and I can't have that stair run going up for solar panel maintenance. I can have the solar panels and I can have a roof hatch, but I can't, as I understand it, have anything other than solar panels go above that glass ceiling. So if height's gonna be it, great, but please just let one stair in the elevator overrun. Say it has to be pushed back from the edge of the building, but let that go up to whatever height you determine so that we could have an actual overrun and get that extra story. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brad Moore. You have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Can you hear me?
We can.
I wanna echo the comments of the previous speaker wholeheartedly. Yeah, we lose an entire floor of what could be residential floor area because of the de minimis amount of elevator override in stair tower. And it's not just a matter of roof access to service the solar panels. I don't know if anybody has seen what a solar panel fire looks like, but the fire department, if they had to try to crawl through a hatch to get to the roof of a high-rise, to, to, you know, put out a fire in the solar panel array, God bless them, I wouldn't wanna have to do it. So it's really important to extend at least one of the stair towers up there. So please exempt the stair tower and the elevator override from the building height calculation. Just as some more data points on the FAR and heights, couple of the projects that I was working on previously, they're now built. The six eleven East University High Rise, we hit the max hundred and fifty foot with the elevator override. And we were only able to get six hundred and eighty-five percent FAR. So again, that elevator override cost us fifteen percent FAR. And on the Arbor Blue High Rise, the height was a hundred and forty-eight feet, and our FAR was six eighty-nine. So just a couple other data points. Thanks for all your efforts.
Thank you.
No other speakers have raised their hand?
All right. I realize that we maybe should have admitted commissioner survey back in for Agenda Item Five, but.
How about Agenda Item Six?
We'll give you a chance to turn on your camera. Hi. All right, well, you're here in time for adjournment. So we are adjourned. Have a nice evening, everybody.
Thank you so much.